Oh Danny.
Copy that.
Copy what?
This is David.
Hello.
Okay, David, I don't have a copy.
Hello, Dave.
I got it.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for January 25th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Bill Imberson, aye.
John Van Slus, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
So that takes care of that first order of things?
Good.
All right, we have a...
Do you want to do the submittal? I don't know if anyone's going to be... Oh yeah, no, I'm sorry, Randy Waterman.
Thirty-five Cape Roads Site Plan Review. All right. Um, come on. Did you get Jeff's report?
Yes, please.
And did you respond to him? Because I didn't get a final report from Jeff, I don't think.
So we, actually... I can introduce myself. I'm Brian Nelson from Metro West Engineering. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to represent the applicants for thirty-five Cape Road. And yes, we did get a letter.
Before you go, I forgot to read the notice.
Okay.
The notice into the record. Um, I have too many quirk shades on. In accordance with MGL at Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, at seven fifteen. Oh, actually, we can't start it yet.
A few minutes early?
So we'll have to hold till seven fifteen.
There's only, we set them all at seven.
You can't start a public hearing early.
We do.
Not supposed to.
No, not, we post them all, yeah. We post them all for seven.
Oh yeah, maybe we should start them, Gail, is posting them all for seven. Because you can start them late, you just can't start them early.
Yeah.
Okay. How about seven oh five? That way you can do the minutes. Approve the minutes and then, okay.
That's fine.
We found out that works pretty good.
You got...
Twenty-second.
Go.
What's AJ got?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Uh...
Benoit called me afterwards, after I had already posted the meeting. So he's supposed to be virtual as well.
What's Andy here for?
From Mark Benoit, I'm working with him at sixty Exbridge Road. He asked me to join. I thought he was going to be here. If you guys had any questions about the project, if I could help.
Sixty Exbridge.
He also owns fifty-eight, and he's looking to put this on, move the border.
It's fifty-four.
Is it fifty-four thousand?
Well, it's fifty-four, fifty-eight, and sixty.
Is this the site guy down there? The old trailer place?
No, no, it's underwater, Exbridge Road.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, he wants to move, I thought it was fifty-eight, Gil, because he's, he's, wants to put the garage on sixty.
So Dan, Dan, is that all the people that are on virtual?
Yeah.
All right, I think I, um...
Yeah?
Is Mark Benoit on?
Is Mark Benoit on?
I don't see him.
He's here. He was planning on seven thirty. I was early, but so.
Okay.
He told me to there.
Do you have, uh, do you have any plans with Andy or?
I don't.
Okay.
He wanted to do a preliminary discussion with you guys to make sure that it was going to be feasible for him to build this garage, could he move the property line, and if that was the case, we could move the ledge and then have land planning do their work to move that line. He just wanted to have a...
I think I talked to somebody on this.
Yeah, probably Mark.
And I explained to him that, um, he needs the, he needs the frontage. You can't...
Yeah.
So each one of those lots that he's affecting, that he's moving the boundary on,
Yeah.
have to have two hundred feet frontage.
Even pre-existing?
Even pre-existing, because you are now changing a lot line, so you're making one less conforming.
Yeah.
And you're changing the other one.
Because I don't believe he has two hundred on any of them. That's my guess.
Yeah, so, so to move the...
None of the, none of those lots, they're at their own summer, only fifty feet.
Yeah.
No, so what you would need to do is go and get relief from the ZBA first, and then we could do eighty-one Ps on the lots.
Okay.
Does he combines them all? Does he have enough frontage?
He's, no, he's got structures on each one.
Oh, he got...
Well, there's three there, right, Gil?
Right.
Yeah.
Three structures?
No.
No, three lots.
Fifty-four, fifty-eight, and sixty.
All right, so together, is it two hundred feet?
Altogether, probably, yeah, for all three.
Is there...
But that's what he's trying to avoid.
Is there an acre, is there an acre and a half? Well, if he goes to the ZBA, oh, no, no, I can't.
Yep.
Are they all in his name?
I thought if he goes to an engineer, has an engineer figure it out.
What's that, David?
Maybe if he has an engineer figure it out, it would probably be a lot, we're not engineers.
I mean, but the requirement for an eighty-one P is number one, access. Number two is dimensional requirements. And if he doesn't have requirements, he's going to go get relief of the dimensional requirement.
Exactly. He's got to go to zoning.
He's got to go to zoning first. And then you'd have to come back to us, and we can do the eighty-one Ps on the lot.
So he'll probably be joining you at seven thirty. Would you explain that all to him?
Yes.
I will also tomorrow, but...
Yeah.
I just, just in case you ask questions, without any answers, everything's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Andy.
Hi, Andy.
Thanks.
Uh, we still got about five minutes. We got, uh...
What's Eric Codge?
Eric Codge here. I have, uh, that's a very brief presentation of questions.
Is this on thirty-five Cape Road?
Yes.
It's got to wait for the open, uh, public hearing.
Yep.
And then we just got a, we got a submittal for a site plan and special permit for forty-seven Milford Street, Maryland Dispensary.
That's right here.
All right, uh, so that's, um...
He's supposed to be coming online, though.
Is he online?
I don't know. Randy Waterman.
Is Randy Waterman on? So we'll have to wait for Mr. Waterman. Well, we got five minutes. Um, just so I can bring everybody up to speed, um, we have a website that's done for the new master plan, and we have a Facebook page that should be coming live this week. Um, and we should be able to, uh, uh, really digging into the master plan. Um, once again, if anybody knows anybody that's interested, I'm going to be, when I post those on the webs, uh, post those on Facebook and, um, emails, I'm going to be requesting, uh, people to, um, join the committee, so... That's where we are currently, um. I don't have a laptop, so I can't bring the website up for you right now, but it looks pretty good. Looks pretty good.
Just getting underway now, Bill?
Yeah, that's just getting underway. You know, with COVID and everything, we, we talked about starting it last spring, but, you know, everything just, you know, with the town hall being closed most of the year, um, it just didn't seem like the time. Because one, a few of the things we would need to do is we need public outreach, you know, going to have to be, at some point, meetings, public meetings. Um, so it didn't seem like the environment to begin that, but, um, you know, it's, hopefully, we can start moving forward with it now. By the time we really get in the crux of, uh, doing that, or we'll have more virtual outreach meetings. I think we've, you know, everybody's gotten a lot better at handling meetings and stuff, so I think we could run some decent meetings, but...
I'm involved with one for the first time in my community, serving as a conservation's person.
Representative.
Yeah, so it's been a big learning experience for me. We're about three or four months into it, and it's been all... It's going virtually, and then it's just the group, and the wheels of progress turn slowly, but we've been able to go forward, but we haven't gotten to the community outreach part, except for the survey. We've done the survey.
Are you guys doing this yourself, or?
CMRPC was hired to lead the...
They're doing ours also. And, um, to be honest with you, they're, they're good to work with. You know, in the past, we've always, we tried to write our own, never seemed to work out too well. We had some assistance from them with the survey and stuff, but you never, you know, never, we were never able to get to the point where we could actually start putting everything on paper. So CMRPC is going to play a major role in that, and hopefully, over the course of, uh, the next year, we can hopefully bring it to fruition. There's a lot of work that's been done in the past that we can utilize, and and some sections that have a lot of detail already put together for it, so um, we just got to bring it all together. Good luck.
Thank you, same to you.
It is not an easy task.
Don't, the point I was trying to get to is, it might go along a little smoother than you think, but that's just my observation from what's going on.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly see. I mean, um, you know, it depends upon uh, how much community wants to get involved, you know? I mean, a lot of communities, small communities are fragmented, so you know, you have your people involved in the school, the senior group, and then there's the group that gets involved in town government and stuff, and you got to sort of seam all those together, and sometimes it can be hard. Um, one thing, Dan, before we start this public hearing, if you could put something out tomorrow, um, I'd like to request members from each board to apply somebody, each board and committee to apply somebody, I mean, to the master plan committee, just so there's representation. I don't want us going through a lot of labor and one of those committees or boards, um, being out of sync with what we're doing.
Yeah, why don't we talk afterwards?
Yeah. All right.
Still not time.
It's closing. Oh, no, it's not. What are you moving that clock for? Paid extra overtime?
I would make it faster.
That gets turned ahead at the end of every working day.
One minute, just keeps going, it's like...
That one's one minute also.
It's like the old man...
Jeff Walsh.
It's me, I'm Brian.
It's like the old manufacturing plants used to do, right? Feed the clock up?
Yeah.
See if you can catch up? All right. Um, we're going to call, by my clock over here, it's at seven fifteen, so we're going to begin. Uh, in accordance with the MGL, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, um, I'll put my glasses back on. Um, this is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, at seven fifteen, by the... by the telecommunication person in Menon Town Hall at twenty Main Street, Menon, Massachusetts, zero one seven five six, to consider a site plan review submitted by Brian Nelson of Metro West Engineering at seventy-five Franklin Street, Framingham, Mass., zero one seven oh two, to constrict a thirty-one thousand two hundred square foot commercial building at thirty-five Cape Road, map fourteen dash one fourteen dash thirty-five. Owner of the property is Wangarilty LLC, ten forty main, south main, Framingham. And that was in the Milford Daily News on two five and two twelve. All right. Oh. With that, I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to speak, then the board will ask its questions, and we'll, then we'll defer to our trustworthy engineer we have here tonight, and then we'll, then we'll go to the community for questions. Um, so you may take it from here.
Thank you. My name is Brian Nelson from Metro West Engineering. I know, looking in remotely tonight, are the applicants, John Boja from Eris Construction and Fran Mark, who I believe I saw them logged in um, on the screen up there. And if it's okay, I'm going to take the microphone and go to the presentation board.
Yeah, did you bring any copies with you by any chance?
Of plans?
Yes.
I did not. I thought we had submitted a bunch of eleven by seventeen.
They're in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Just like an open one here.
If not, I can go next door.
That's, uh, it looks like they're in here.
Does Dan have one electronically to put up on the board?
Oh, it should be digital.
They're linked in the chat. They're on that agenda posting on the town website. Go to the home page and click on planning board.
Oh, we got small ones too, yeah, so.
We've done, as we've basically given all the plans, I think there are ten or so sheets in the plan set. Uh, we sent those over this afternoon. And then I've got two color presentation plans, which actually, we just gave to Dan as well. Um, so if you guys are all set, I'll go through the existing conditions for the site pretty quickly. Um, and just to give you an orientation for the board, north is going straight up the page. Cape Road or State Route one forty is located on the right-hand side, going from south to north, the intersection with Bates Street and Cape Road, basically right at this location here. Um, our property is just over a hundred and eighty-two thousand square feet, or just under...
Can you stand on the other side of the easel?
Sure.
Well, the board has to be, yeah, the board has to be able to see it, so go ahead, Brian.
Okay. This is fine with me, if it's good with you guys. Um, you'll just kind of get my arm moving in the way, but, uh, we are a hundred and eighty-two thousand, um, square feet, or just about four point two acres. Uh, we're located in the highway business zone, and the project site is bounded northerly by the soccer fields that were just constructed, and then basically westerly and southerly by the new solar farm that's under construction. And then a little bit further, on the opposite side of the solar field, our residence is at a butt on Bates Street. The existing house is located pretty close to Cape Road. There's an existing house shown in brown, an existing detached garage, which is also fairly large, just a little bit southwest of the house, and then a couple smaller outbuildings to the left, or to the west of the existing house. There is an existing access easement, and you can see the boundary of that easement runs here. It kind of feathers out a little bit as we come into the solar farm. That gravel road is existing right now, and that provides access to the solar farm. Uh, so again, that's, it's, the front part of it was paved. The last time I was there, the rest of it was just a pretty hard-packed gravel. Uh, the total existing impervious area, including the gravel driveway, is just under twenty-two thousand square feet. And in terms of topography, we start from elevation three-ten in this area, and we taper down as we go across the site about twenty-five feet in elevation to elevation two-eight-five at the westerly boundary. Elevations, um, for the first third or so coming west from Cape Road are relatively flat. We pick up a little bit of severity in topography through the middle third, and then topography really steepens up as we get to the westerly edge. And you've got a pretty significant drop of about fifteen feet in elevation from here to here. Um, the property is primarily wooded. Some of it's been cleared recently, and, um, there are areas that were cleared are just fairly brushy at this point. Really, not a lot of mature trees. The density of mature trees picks up a little bit towards the back of the site, but again, still a lot of young growth hardwoods primarily. The existing house has an existing cesspool, uh, in the back, and there are, with the exception of a small stone trench for the, um, gravel driveway, there are no stormwater controls in place. Um, very quick pass through existing conditions, but, um, I'm going to move on to the proposed, if that's okay.
Sure.
This is a proposed board of, uh, basically at the same scale, and, um...
These are the big ones.
And again, north is going straight up the page. Cape Road running from south to north is on the right-hand side, or the easterly side of the property. Uh, the proposal resolves basically around the construction of a new commercial building that's shown in light brown here. It's about thirty-one thousand, just a little over thirty-one thousand square feet in area, or footprint. Building's located about eighty-five feet off the sideline of Cape Road and roughly centered in the property from, from south to north. Building's got dimensions roughly. It's ninety feet running south to north, and just under three hundred and fifty feet running from west to east. Basically, existing curb cut will be used, um, for access to the site, the northerly side, and we're proposing a second curb cut down at the southeasterly side in this location here. And basically, the building is oriented so the customer or visitor face of the building will be oriented south, and northerly side will be more of the service entrances for the building. And the applicant is, um, has one tenant, um, basically a light metal, a light metal fabricator, um, looking to move a shop from Holliston to Mendon, and they're looking to occupy basically the easterly ten thousand square feet of this building. Uh, there's a second tenant that is, um, anxious to come in as well, seeking another fifty-six hundred square feet or so of, of tenant space. And so basically, that's what the applicant has in mind, is basically in the spirit of the zoning bylaw for highway business, basically light manufacturing type uses. And just to kind of run you around the site, we've got, again, the two entrances. You come in, there are parking spaces along the southerly face, or again, kind of the office spaces, or uh, customer visitor entrances, if you will. So we've got parking along the southerly face of the building, a few spaces out behind the building, and then this would be, basically, the northerly side would be for, um, basically the business or, um, you know, employee access and loading, um, and you'll see that on the elevations in a couple minutes. Looking at a new septic system for the building, proposed in this grass island up at the front, up near Cape Road, uh, we've got a network of basically drain pipes, uh, catch basins and manholes that will route roof runoff and runoff from the parking lot to one of two infiltration basins. There's a larger sediment for bay and infiltration basin, um, basically just located west of the building. We've got a smaller infiltration basin proposed in the northwest corner. The larger basin will collect roof flow, and basically the southerly and westerly parking areas. The smaller basin will collect runoff from the northerly pavement and routed to this facility right here. Uh, just to give you a couple numbers, um, basically total proposed impervious area is about ninety-four thousand square feet. Uh, that's about a seventy-three thousand square foot increase. Part of that increase is basically, um, this existing access driveway that will be paved, not in its entirety, but basically to a location right about here. So this gravel driveway running from Cape Road down to here will be paved, um, and that will be routed to the storm drain system as well. There is a proposed well in this location here that'll be the potable water supply for the building. There is a fire connection proposed coming off the existing water main in Cape Road, and that'll run along the northerly, uh, edge of the building, and there's a fire hydrant right here, uh, proposed as well. And with this stormwater infiltration system in place, um, basically, the majority of runoff from the site is a high point right about here, so the majority is flowing in the westerly direction. Basically, with the two infiltration systems going from two through hundred-year storm, we see pretty big reductions in the smaller storms, about seventy-five to eighty percent in terms of rates and volumes. As we go up to the hundred-year storm, that whittles down to about a ten percent reduction, but still certainly compliant with stormwater management. Uh, the front section, again, just runoff being directed to Cape Road is, is reduced in terms of rate and volume by about fifty percent, so it'll certainly be less burdened on whatever storm drainage components are in Cape Road. Uh, we did submit a planting plan as part of our submittal. Uh, calls for twelve deciduous trees. We've got some red oaks that are located basically on the northerly side of the access driveway. Uh, we've got some red maples, and, uh, we've got along the southerly side, and this was the closest presence to residential, so we've got an arborvitae hedge proposed along the southerly boundary line. And there are some shrubs proposed, and some larger shrubs, uh, basically some red osier dogwood, and some flowering crab apples proposed in some of the curb islands and, uh, in some of the larger areas here. We do have, and I'll go quickly through these, and this might be tough to see, but these were submitted as well. Uh, these are the building elevations, so the top elevation, basically, this is the elevation, if you were looking at the southerly side, or the south elevation of the building. Fairly straightforward building, metal rib siding, um, the building is stepped down in three or two locations, basically, to work with that drop in topography as we go from east to west. Uh, man doors and windows for access to some of the office spaces, again, that would be facing the southerly, or the southerly face of the building. Northerly face, again, is more of the service side of the building, and we've got man doors, a combination of man doors and overhead doors to allow, you know, access in and out of the, the manufacturing portions of each facility. Uh, the building is about, from top of, or first floor, um, to basically the low ridge is about eighteen feet. It's about twenty-one feet or so to the peak of the ridge, so a relatively flat roof. But again, not a ominous presence as you look at it from any elevation. And I'll conclude with, um, just a quick pass through the photometric plan, and again, the photometric plan was submitted, um, and the light cut sheets, I believe, were submitted as well. The, um, plan basically calls for twenty wall pack fixtures that are located on the perimeter of the building with a mounting height of about fifteen feet. Those are all LED fixtures with, um, with full cutoff shields, so, um, you know, basically, the photometrics are showing minimal light levels, um, certainly as you get away from the building, you know, dropping down to about point two to point one foot candles as you get towards the northerly and southerly boundary lines.
It's all retained within the, uh, the site though, correct?
There is a little bit of overlap, uh, along the southerly boundary. It's, it's minimal here. Um, and again, we can look at, uh, maybe adjusting the height of these or just the shield.
Yeah, because I believe that backs up to Edward Drive. I certainly don't want, um, don't want light fading into the back ads of the residence over on Edward Drive.
There is also, um, again, in looking at the plan sheet six hundred, might show this a little bit better. There is a strip of the solar farm that acts as a buffer between our parcel and the neighboring parcels down on Bates and Edward. So I, I'd like to conclude my presentation, um, you know, again, just a couple things to talk about is, we received a letter from Graves Engineering last week, uh, last Thursday, and spent a good chunk of the weekend making plan revisions. We haven't submitted anything formally yet. There were a bunch of comments, uh, and so I apologize to Mr. Walsh for the length of the letter and the time that he had to spend reviewing it. We, most of the comments were minor, and we have revised them pretty quickly. I did think that there were a couple significant points, um, that were mentioned in a few places that I thought it would be good to talk about tonight. And there were a couple points about building use, and, you know, basically the amount of off-street parking provided. And, um, so again, we feel that the light manufacturing use is, is consistent with the highway business zone, certainly one of the uses allowed. And again, from the applicants, um, have one tenant who is locked in, you know, pending approval to occupy ten thousand square feet of this building. Uh, they're looking at having a maximum of ten employees, so roughly one space per thousand square feet. Um, second manufacturing use, fifty-six hundred square feet, looking again at six spaces. So again, roughly that one space per thousand square foot, uh, similar to the parking requirements in the bylaw. And we've got fifty-one spaces, I believe, proposed, so there's a surplus of spaces. Um, but the owners, or the applicants actually have experience with, uh, properties in Hope Dale and surrounding communities, and that one space per thousand square feet has worked out pretty well for them. pretty well for them. So, and there were a few points in, in the Graves letter, so again, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. And certainly the applicants, when I'm done with my presentation, can chime in if they'd like to. But I do think that with the low number of employees for the total building, really our site is not anticipated to be a big traffic generator with 30 employees max. Light manufacturing probably will not draw a lot of visitors, you know, or additional vehicle traffic to the site. So we did ask for, in our submittal, a waiver from the traffic impact assessment. And I'm not sure if, if Mr. Walsh saw that as part of the submittal. I know we submitted, I don't know if that impact statement and list of waivers was, was sent over to Graves. And there were some lengthy comments about some of our hydrology and watershed delineations and some of the infiltration basin sizing. And that's a lot of where I went back and kind of revisited some of our design and some of our parameters. And it doesn't reflect on the plans you just looked at, but we have basically enlarged the two infiltration basins to provide some extra freeboard between the high water mark and the top of the basin. A lot of the comments were just silly little things like incorrect pipe slopes and things like that, and we've made those adjustments. So we hope within the next couple of days, we'll have all those revisions wrapped up. And I figured I would take whatever revisions or comments we received tonight and try to roll those all into a revised submittal later this week. And MAST DOT, we are on a state highway. That was, I think there were a couple of comments in the letter about that as well. We have had a couple of conversations with MAST DOT and they've reviewed basically what we've submitted to you guys. They've not looked heavily at the drainage, but they have looked at the site plans, gave us a few pointers to look at and in terms of looking to maybe just adjust the entrance and some of the incoming turning radii to make sure we've got adequate, you know, basically turning movement for larger vehicles. So MAST DOT will have review over the curb cuts and then also the water service connection, which will come off of Cape Road for fire protection. So with that, again, I'll, I'll look to the applicants, John Boja and Fran Marku, to see if they have anything that they'd like to add. And then with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hi, John Boja here. No, Brian, I don't have anything to add. If there's any questions of us as applicants, happy to answer them, but I think you did a great job on that, so please, let me see.
I have a few questions. Okay. This curb cut that comes out to the north side of the, the property. You say there's an existing curb cut there now?
That's correct.
And does it allow access from the easement?
That's correct. That provides access to the easement for the solar farm, yes.
Yeah, just the way you drew it, you drew, you drew your curb cut off of the southerly bound of that easement. So it kind of cut it off. I wasn't sure whether that was intentional or...
Which sheet are you looking at, actually?
I'm looking at page, Jesus, here's my glasses. C-300.
Okay.
Probably three.
So we've got full radii there. We've got on the inbound side coming north, I believe that's a, a 20-foot radius and I believe we've got a 10-foot radius on the southerly end of that northerly curb cut.
My concern obviously is that you may cut off that access to the solar, if you put an actual curbing on it.
Well, what we've done kind of pursuant to the MAST DOT review too, is we've actually widened those up to 25 to 30-foot radii. So I think we've made a substantial improvement from what's shown on this plan.
Okay.
Same for the southerly entrance as well. There is an existing utility pole on the north side of the northerly entrance. And again, that was one of the reasons, I think that pole was slated to be moved, but hasn't been yet. So we've basically kind of rotated the curb cut a little bit south just to avoid that utility pole.
Yeah. And my other, my other question is, is the southerly entrance falls right in the, the entrance to not only 16, but Bates Street. That tends to be an extremely, extremely dangerous corner for the town right now. A lot of bus traffic goes through there and we have a lot of traffic from the soccer fields, particularly in the summertime and into the spring and fall. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm confident that, that without some type of controls there, that that's, you know, a proper place to put. And does it meet our sightline requirements, Jeff?
For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh and I'm with Graves Engineering, peer engineering consultant for the planning board. Site distances are good at that location. I share the concern with the, the driveway tying into Cape Road at an intersection. We're not traffic engineers, so I'm not in a position to offer an opinion other than just raise a concern. I do recognize that MAST DOT has his jurisdiction here.
Right.
They obviously have quite a bit of experience with this. But nevertheless, if, if the planning board someone desired, I don't see why you couldn't ask for the applicant to, to have a traffic specialist look at this if it wasn't done already.
Yeah, and I think we're going to need the report from DOT at some point also before we can approve this. I want to see what their findings are before I'm willing, if the DOT is going to come down and, and give a traffic report, but I think you should have your own done. I, I'm just not, there's been quite a few accidents at that intersection.
Well, don't get me wrong, DOT would be reviewing the application, the site plans like we see, and rather than write a report, I think they'd be, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but offering their recommendations or even issuing an access permit to allow the driveway. You wouldn't get any written narrative or anything like that.
Then we'll need you to have someone take a look at that intersection.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this traffic comes available there, at least on 140 already within town, scope of the town. I think there've already been some done, so.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's not the delay and such, it's just the safety aspect of having...
Well, exactly.
Which doesn't usually lend itself to turning delays and turning movements and so on and so forth. It's got to do with just the, the movement of the traffic, if you will.
Well, what I can envision occurring here is someone's going to try and take a left out of that, that exit. Whether you, whether you think they might or think they not, because this is a residential road. So for a truck or anybody to make a swing out of there, it's going to be awful difficult. And during certain times of the day, traffic's backed up there. So someone trying, they may try pulling out, they may be in that intersection and people come pretty quick off 140 to turn onto Bates Street. There may not be room to stop. I mean, we've, including our own buses that have been involved there. So I'm not confident that where that's positioned now, that that's going to work out for the town. I mean, if you can figure out a way to just use the northern exit.
Well, that's certainly something we can look at and I'll talk to the applicants about that. When I did talk, talked on a couple of occasions with one of the District III engineers at MAST DOT, their concern wasn't so much egress from the site. Their concern more was with having sufficient radii to allow decelerating vehicles to make it into the site without causing, you know. So that was their main concern, but I'll echo these comments to MAST DOT and see if I can get even just something in writing for them saying they don't have a concern or if they do, then as Mr. Walsh suggested, we could get a, a traffic engineer to take a look at it.
I would at least have a traffic engineer take a look at this thing so we can, so I can rest easy. I certainly don't want to be waking up to the morning paper and finding someone got killed there.
It was a fatality day last year.
Yeah, there was a fatality right there.
Without your building there, there was, you know, there's been substantial accidents at that.
Okay. And we'll look at the option too of, of just having one curb cut and using existing, basically.
And what is the buffer on, on the property? Is it?
From which side?
From the southerly side. I know that's, that's a solar farm.
That's correct, yeah.
But it may not always be a solar farm. So I could consider buffer for the future, you know. And I, I just, I don't see a footage on it, but...
I can add that dimension to the plans. I believe we tried to hold a minimum of 10 feet, but I think it's closer to 12 feet in that area from the boundary line to the back of the curbing.
And what's the, what's the zoning regulation, 20?
For buildings?
Yeah. The 20 or 50?
I don't remember, but it's on the plan somewhere.
The setback for the buildings is 20 feet. We held, we are to the...
In the highway business district particularly?
We are 59 or so feet from the southerly boundary to the southerly face of the building. And then we're about, like I said, 12 feet from the property line to the edge of curb.
I thought we had a note for buffer.
Are they incorporating the access road into the, into that lot?
No.
It's not?
No, they can't.
It looked like it on the front.
No, it runs alongside of it, right?
Well, the access road runs through the subject property presently. So we're looking to basically pave a good portion of that. It's gravel right now, to pave it and funnel that runoff into the drainage system.
So that's part of the property?
But that, that's not the access road.
Yes, it is.
The access road's on the north side of the property. That's the existing.
Right.
And then the proposed is on the southerly.
Oh, so you're using the, okay.
That's why they're paving it.
Right.
If you look at it, Bill, you can see where it says easement, utility easement, right there on the plan.
Yeah, there...
I see it now.
I can point it out on the board up here if you'd like as well.
I mean, on the property, so it's within their property, so it's under their scope anyways, so. Obviously, there can't just be any blocking of the easement.
That's correct.
That's why I was wondering if they're going to put a separate gate further down.
For the, for the solar farm. Because we have a gate on that now, right?
I believe so.
Supposed to be.
I would expect there's a gate. I don't remember where it was proposed.
Yeah, I think it's further down though. I think the gate's further down towards the back of the solar farm, right?
I think we talked about that a long time ago. Gate's down by the...
Yeah, gate's down here.
I believe so.
Sense to me.
If we could just make sure where that gate's positioned that, because there has to be a gate there.
Down the end of the, end of the lot, you could definitely put the gate at the lock line so it doesn't infringe on anything that they have to do on their property.
The other, the other concern, how visible is this going to be from the road? What is this, uh, I'm going to get a...
The building's about 85 feet roughly off the sideline of the road and...
Is there any type of growth or...?
There is not. We've got pretty much a lawn area and some, we have some plantings, but the septic system's in that area, in that front island, so that takes up the northerly say half or so.
I see the, I see the septic.
We do have some plantings proposed south of that. We've got a couple red maples and some of the flowering crab apples proposed, basically in that southerly half of the island. And again, I didn't want to plant anything too close to the septic system, so kind of left that area clear. And then we do have some plantings, you know, basically some ornamental grasses and some perennials in the bed along the easterly side of the building.
Yeah, we just usually, we ask for rendering if it's visible from the road.
Okay.
Because Mendon likes to, they don't just like a flat steel building any longer. It's something we change. We'd like to see some type of rendering that way. If possibly, you dress up the, some of the other buildings on 16 in that, I mean, on 140 in that, that corridor right there near you. You'll see some of the newer buildings up that already, we've already applied that to them. They've been, they've been, you know, they've been more than willing to, to, we're trying to up the appearance.
Sure.
Of 140, so. There's a lot of old buildings still down that area that it doesn't apply to, but we're trying as we move forward to change that.
I think that Braz's building, everybody in the town would happy, all everybody on the board would happen with that, right?
It was sort of just, you know, the impact to the front of the building, I mean, it just makes a huge difference.
Sure.
And the last thing I had is, and I know it probably goes to maybe some of the questions Jeff asked, was community and environmental impacts that uses that may go in here. Now, I know you're aware, there's a use table there, you already applied it for light manufacturing, but I'm sure if some of these uses that come in, I mean, the applicant's going to have to refer to that use table and if necessary, apply for the use before this board.
Yeah, we're aware of that and...
Yeah, because I mean, if there's, if there's materials and, and even there's light manufacturing that's coming in, if there's materials and stuff that need to be addressed, you know, we're going to need to take a look at those. And I'm sure you deal with CONCOM on some of that stuff too, but, I mean, if holding tanks and stuff apply to that type of business, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know oils are used in, in light, light steel fabrication. You know, it's, there's got to be collection systems or something that may apply to that. So this board needs to be aware when those things come forward.
I think that certainly our applicant's aware of that and that we realize that as tenant spaces get fit out and permits are, you know, as, as construction drawings are advanced, that certainly we would come back before the board for any approvals here and certainly pursue it to the building permit process as well.
Perfect. Because I don't want to end up with a voucher on my desk, asked, from the select board, asking me to allow a license for something that we never saw. It doesn't make either one of us look good, so. But other than that, I'm good. Do you guys have any further questions?
We've got a couple of questions.
Well, Jeff needs to...
After, after the board member, sure, I'd be glad to speak after that.
Has the fire department reviewed this plan for...
Yes, they have, actually. They sent a...
The other question that I had was you mentioned 30 employees for the two spaces that you're proposing have rented. What about the third one?
And I sent it...
30 employees would be the max for the building.
The whole building?
Yeah, so we've got for the 10,000 square foot space, we've got a maximum of 10 employees and the 5,600 square feet, square foot space, we've got a maximum of six.
So that's total, total rent out?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we've got 30 budgeted basically through the septic system.
They may, but that's not our issue.
That's all I have.
What's the hours of operation? You don't know?
I don't know that. I would assume with light manufacturing, and again, the applicant can chime in too here, but I would assume it would be say seven to five or something like that Monday through Friday, maybe some Saturday, but...
I anticipate a 24-hour operation.
And again, I, I can't speak to that, but I can...
They'd have to apply for the select board.
Look at, look to our applicants for a little bit of guidance there if they have anything they want to chime in with.
Well, like I said, they'll, they'll apply for a license with the select board. The select board will overlook the hours.
Okay.
All we're concerned is the construction hours, which is Monday through Friday, seven to seven. And then Saturdays, I believe it's seven to five, seven to five or eight.
Is it to five or the billing time?
I think it's to five, Damon.
Okay.
We'll read into the record a email from Bill Kessler, who is an outstanding fire chief. It says, "I refuse the site plan set for the building on 35 Cape Road and ask for consideration of the following. The architect engineer ensures the fire department access requirements as identified in MAST 527 CMR-1, Chapter 18 AMET. And a key box as specified by the fire department is installed near the main door where an enunciator panel is located. Exterior pass doors needed to meet Item 1. A key the same and three such keys are provided to the fire department for placement in the key box." That's all the input I've received from Mr. Kessler, so I'm sure those are satisfactory to you. All right, at this point, I'm going to hand it over to, to our town consultant, Jeff Graves. All right, at this point, I'm going to hand it over to, to our town consultant, Jeff Graves from Graves, I mean, Jeff Wallace from Graves Engineering. And take it away, Jeff.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you again, Jeff Wallace, Graves Engineering. The letter, I'd rather not take up a lot of the board's time going through the letter. There were no, what I feel, showstoppers. There's a number of comments. We spoke to the general point that most of them were on the order of housekeeping types of issues, I would, I would say. Couple of things I wanted to bring out. One, we've already discussed, and that's the, our concern of the intersection of the southern driveway at Bates Street and Cape Road. There could be different ways, if, if, if a traffic consultant finds it his concerns, there could be different ways to address it. Anywhere from one way in, one way out, limiting turns either to the right or to the left. Or eliminating it altogether. Again, that's, that's what a traffic specialist should offer an opinion for. I really don't feel comfortable of putting any recommendations out there. I can appreciate southbound traffic on Cape Road, turning right onto Bates Street, not slowing down much, and now there's going to be a new intersection with people coming out. So maybe a traffic consultant would find that.
Yeah, maybe.
Better to enter only and not exit, but again.
Or 90-degree turn. I mean, that's something you have to see what your traffic consultant says. Instead of being a fork in the road.
Yep.
Construct that into a 90-degree turn. That's probably something you'd have to work out with DOT, but they're turning everything into 90-degree turns these days, so.
Oh, you're speaking Bates Street, bringing, making Bates Street a.
Yeah, now you talked about the, the buffer between the building and that edge of property. On the, the other side of that is Edward, Edward Road. There isn't solar over there. Solar's on the other side.
But part of the lot, I understand, is south of the lot.
Oh, it's down below.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, but there's still residents up where they're put in the building.
There's residences south of the abutting land.
Yeah.
That is part of the solar project.
Yeah. So yeah, there are three houses on Bates Street, and then you kind of make that right turn onto Edward Road.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the buffer zone. I, you know, I keep talking about it, but when we originally turned that into a highway business, business district, that was one of our concerns was the, the buffer between the commercial property and the, and the residential. Understanding that, you know. Now, there are certain times of year, but any type of buffer isn't going to act, but certainly, I think most concern would be this, you know, spring, summer, and fall, that there is some type of buffer through there that. So as adequately, whether it's a arborvitae or whatever, you can cut the, the people's backyards off of. I mean, I'm aware, because I rented space and hope they'll let people park, and sometimes workers will tend to, you know, gather in the parking lots and stuff. Last people, thing neighbors need to be seen is looking over and seeing, you know, a pack of people looking into their backyard. So that would be a concern of mine. So if we could come up with a plan to put some type of, you know, dense. Buffer in there, just so they're not looking at the, the property and.
I think you had an arborvitae.
We have that arborvitae head shown on our plan.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's, and again, we figured the arborvitae would, would be there all year round, and they'll grow pretty quick and, and, you know, they'll grow into each other to provide a, a pretty dense screen.
And my very last question is noise. It's. I certainly, especially if you, you run long hours and stuff, and you got, you got, you've got equipment running over there that, you know, press brakes or something that is cutting sheet metal can tend to be pretty loud. You know, there's, if that's going to be the case, maybe for the sound insulation or something can be planned for those type of uses that are going to apply. Because certainly if that use comes before me, that's going to be a question I ask your tenant. And so.
I think that that's fine. We also, and again, the way the building's positioned with basically the, the customer or visitor entrances facing south, that immediate access to the building on that southerly side will be into office space. It won't be directly into a manufacturing facility. So again, doing what we can to buffer the residences on Bates and Edward, you know, putting kind of the business end of the building, if you will, abutting the soccer field and, and away from the residences.
Okay.
So hopefully that should help some.
You know what happens in the summertime? You know, the, the overhead doors stay open because it's hot and, you know, and the noise tends to travel. You know, so we just want to try to keep the residence.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what's going to create the phone call to me that's going to create the phone call to them.
That's why knowing the, the use is, is really important to the board, you know.
Because, believe me, I get, I get supervision, you know, subdivision developments call me, why are the trucks going up and down my road? Well, you live on a subdivision development right now until they're done with it. At this point, I'm going to open, because they've been patient, I'm going to open questioning to the.
Bill, I got, I got one more question, Bill.
Yeah, Damon.
Snow, snow storage on the property, I just, am I not seeing it or is it just not there?
I think it's up in the front next to the, I saw something, there's some snow storage.
There are a couple areas, actually. There is one in the front just south of the septic system, and again, that's why we didn't heavily plant that area. There is a snow storage area right between the edge of the parking, the westerly edge of the parking and the sediment for bay. And then we've got a large snow storage area down upward at the northwestern corner of the property, off the gravel driveway, right, basically between the subsurface infiltration or infiltration basin two and northerly of the gravel driveway.
Okay, so I just couldn't see it on my phone. Another question, so the, so I, on the rendering of the building, where you say you got office space coming in on the, on that southern side. Basically, you just shook a couple man doors going into a steel building. There's no office front with windows and, you know, any brick facade or anything like that, as far as I can see, right?
There is a brick shelf that extends up a couple feet from the first floor, but again, yeah, the, the building is just the man doors and the windows on the southerly side. And then we've got no windows on the northerly side with the combination of man doors and then the overhead doors.
Okay, I mean, as Bill said earlier, and I'm gonna, we're gonna be very, we're gonna be looking for something that's more country and not just a square steel building. You know, off, you know, definitely on the front end, if you got office space and you got. Then I'm gonna try to show something.
Get a couple of.
Yep, we can do that. We can see what's around similar in the neighborhood and then see what we can do to, you know, answer a little bit of this one a little bit.
There's like a new car wash and then new auto repair. They, they're wrapped, like the lower four feet are wrapped with some type of stone and, you know, I mean, it just gives a little better appearance than a typical steel building.
Yep.
Doesn't.
Definitely, it'll probably look, look more towards a Brazza look-alike than.
Yeah, Brazza's is.
Car wash really didn't, couldn't go as, we were in a strict there.
Like, but Brazza's building came out much.
Construction.
Which one is that?
It's, what number Cape Road is it?
It's right across from the car wash, isn't it?
Yeah, it's right across from the car wash. Is the contractor?
Oh, okay, yep, 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 okay. Yeah, I've driven by that before, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there an area where you're going to have a dumpster for refuse?
That is shown on the plan as well. That's basically located near the infiltration basin. It's located off the southwestern corner of the building, but we've got a fenced-in 15-by-30 enclosure.
If I could make a suggestion, possibly to your point, Barry, is that it's on, the dumpster is on the end, the south end, southwest corner of the building, and more material to go in. The dumpster might come out of the garage doors on the north side. So perhaps switching the location of the dumpster and the propane tanks.
Yeah, we can do that.
Might make sense, because you also have propane tanks up in the other corner. Now your propane tanks would be opposite corners.
Sure.
But I, I think that would keep, any forklifts that are going over to the dumpster, it'd be better to keep them up on the north end.
So if you're running.
Also, another thing that I'm just.
You're gonna have to have foot ramps inside the building. What you got, what are you, how are you handling the, the tight tank?
Have some kind of a tight tank in, and again, I think that'll be more as tenant fit out goes. But again, that will have to be, you know, installed outside and then vented up through the roof like a, you know, conventional oil grid separator.
All right.
Removing that dumpster from that corner, probably be a smart thing to do is make that snow storage, since you got, you got this whole building on a hill, and when it melts up at the front of the building, it's gonna, water's gonna run down and refreeze along the whole side of the building. Just a thought, not obviously.
Also, dumpster up near the northwest building and, and leaving that area open for snow storage, leaving the propane tanks where they are, and then maybe putting the dumpster up near the northwest corner. So we've got some options for that. We can look at.
It won't be open dumpsters anyways, right?
That's correct. It'll be an enclosure.
Enclosure dumpster.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to. Does anyone from the community have questions or? Sure. Did you get that? Write that down.
I couldn't hear him.
Skip Wiganowski, 7 Edward Road. I do have.
I'm having trouble understanding you. What's your name, sir?
I'm sorry with the mask on.
She needs to record it. Skip Wiganowski.
Oh, Jim, okay.
7 Edward Road.
Concerns, and you have addressed some of them. My main concern is the size of the footprint of the property and the abutting space. You are going to be right on top of the residence, and if you've got propane, that makes me a little bit concerned if there's, should be an accident or a fire. There was a fire there at the lumberyard not so long ago, so I mean, those things do happen. I'm also, you mentioned the traffic, which was a big concern of mine as far as the sight lines, and you did address that. A concern of mine is the turning of large trucks down there. There's not a lot of room to turn around as you get down towards the solar field. And then another concern of mine is, you just touched on it a minute ago, about, or the gentleman on, on the line, about the water draining. That's all going to drain down towards the solar field. So I don't know if that's going to present a problem. And then my other concern was leaching of chemicals from the manufacturing. If there's any washing of chemical metals or anything like that, was it not?
Let's start with your, your first question. Your first question was what exactly?
The footprint is, is close to allowance of space between the building and the abutment seems to be very small.
Well, he says the building 60 feet from the, the, from the property line. So even in our prior bylaw, it was 50. So he's, he's, the building has overmet the, the setback from there.
This is Eric Hodge at 3 Bates Street. I have a, a comment particularly relevant to that, but if maybe I could address that after this gentleman's comments.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's, but keep in mind, this is site plan review. We're looking at issues that they're required to meet. This is, this isn't a special permit. I mean, he's meeting requirements and, you know, each one of these, I know you talked about the propane tanks. I'm sure the fire department looked at that. I'm sure our engineer looked at that. You know, and leakage of materials. I mean, when, when we decide to allow the use on the property, there's going to be certain requirements he's going to have. The EPA is going to require it anyways, but he's going to have to have certain holding tanks and stuff that, you know, these, it's not like it was 25 years ago where you'd go in the back of the lot and dump out your oil. It just doesn't work that way anymore. A lot of businesses today are measured by the amount of material you bring in. It's the amount of material you send back out to waste. It's, it's controlled, you know, so these guys are going to know what they're, they're going to be required to do as far as those materials. As far as drainage down into the solar fields, I'm sure all the soil testing's been done. I know our town consultant, who's a, who's an engineer, he looks at that stuff and I'm sure they've met those requirements as far as the drainage down into the.
They're going to be pushing the snow basically the same way they push it on the soccer field down towards that solar field.
He has a whole drainage, there's a big area there. I was mainly just concerned about the ice generating from the snow melt. I don't think that's going to be an issue getting to the solar field.
Water on site's going to be.
It's going to be caught in the drainage system.
Yeah, it's going to be caught in the.
The drainage system, yeah.
We've got enough pitch going from east to west also where water should drain pretty well. No flat air.
It should be fine. Jeff doesn't have any problems with it. We should be okay.
Not, I, with respect to the snow storage, I like where they've got most of it located in that it's on grass and where they can, it's upgrade, it's on grass up gradient of the stormwater basin, so that the, the snow melt's going to go into the, toward the basin. That's an extremely low volume compared to rainfall, so there's no issue as far as handling the volume of water from the snow melt. And Damon, you bring up a very good point. In the bottom of the snow pile, every year, it's, there's trash and debris and such, and on these grassy areas that can be raked up and, and cleaned up with the spring cleaning that's done for the landscaping. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the snow storage.
Sound good.
Eric, you had something you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I contacted Gail earlier because I had wanted to share an extremely brief presentation, just so we can all be looking at the same thing together. So I'm going to go ahead and try and share my screen now.
I'm sorry, what address?
Sure, I meant 3 Bates Street.
3 Bates.
Thank you.
He's across the street, actually. You're, you're across the street from the.
No, I'm, I'm the closest resident.
Oh, you're right next door.
So quick apologies for, you know, formality of the presentation, but like I said, you know, I wanted everybody to be able to see the same thing at the same time. Are you guys seeing my screen, by the way?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So my primary concern is these plans as presented don't appear to conform to Article 3, Section 301(c) of the zoning bylaws. In particular, Item 15 discusses a 100-foot, 200-foot buffer between the highway business district and the rural residential district. That item indicates that that buffer is not to be used for any other manner except for natural or required vegetation. I've got the, the relevant section of the bylaw listed here, but it's also referenced that where you can find that on the town's website. So what I've done is I took the, the proposed site, proposed layout plan from the applicant, and what I've done here is I've superimposed those buffers onto the, the layout plan here. The, the hashed green section represents that 100-foot buffer, and the red lined area represents a 200-foot radius from the nearest residential dwelling, which happens to be my house at 3 Bates Street. As you can see, the proposed layout plan infringes on both the 100-foot and 200-foot buffers utilizing that space for other purposes other than the natural or required vegetation. Of particular note are the parking lot erosion control area and the transformer to the front of the site. So with all of that said, my primary question and concern is how will this site plan be updated to conform to that article?
Let me take a look what you're looking at then. Um, that's a good question. Just looking at 301 right now. And that's why I asked that question before.
I'll put that back up on the screen for everybody to see.
Mr. Chairman, there may not be an answer tonight, but I'm sure there'll be some investigating on both parties, myself and the applicant's team.
Yeah, they've, it's, um, it's an allowable land uses, uh, that the highway business district, um.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I was pretty sure. That's why I asked that question. I was pretty sure I had written that in there to protect the, uh, Edward Road when I wrote the, um, when I wrote that bylaw for the, uh, highway business district. And, um, it was, it was on, it was, it was on my order of things. I had actually written a note on it here. Order of things to check after we left tonight. Um, as you know, a, uh, and Eric, I'm sure recalls that because Eric was in attendance when I wrote that bylaw. And, uh, and that's pretty much the way I had remembered it too, Eric.
Yep.
We'll, we'll have to take a look, certainly take a look at that.
I appreciate that.
This hearing tonight is going to be continued anyways because we have the issue of the opening on, you know, the entrance and, um, that we're going to have to deal with, but.
Certainly. I do have a number of other questions and concerns. Um, I'm happy to go over them or I'm happy to defer them till the next session, uh, whichever the board would prefer.
Well, why don't we get to them so they can come back with answers and we don't, um, you know, I don't want to knock these off one at a time, so.
Sure. Fair enough. Uh, so this is my, my last slide. Um, and we have covered a, a bunch of this already. Um, regarding tenants, um, the only one that we haven't covered thus far, uh, would, uh, be, you know, if, if, should a tenant, you know, be requiring a special permit, um, such as a marijuana retail establishment? Would, uh, that tenant still require a special permit from the, the site plan hearing or, um, you know, does anything change in that regard?
They, they have to get a special permit, not necessarily got in site plan as long as the exterior of the building and the property met, you know, the requirements for a recreational facility. If not, then they'd have to come back with a site plan on how they were going to meet that.
Okay.
If not, they'd have to come to us for a use variance, uh, a use, uh, special permit to, for, to allow the use at the, at that location.
Okay. Um, regarding traffic, I know we've talked a lot about, uh, you know, volume and, and shape of the traffic. Um, we haven't really discussed what types of traffic we should expect. So as homeowners in the area, should we expect heavy duty trucks, you know, 18 wheelers delivering materials? What would that look like and how, how will that impact residents?
If, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna guess, I would, there's always going to be the certain opportunity where an 18 wheeler is going to come in and out of there. Um, but I think the majority of the traffic is probably going to be workers.
I would believe so. I would believe there might be.
Automobiles.
Some smaller delivery trucks and certainly some of the, um.
Yeah, most of, um, like, you know, like they're talking about a sheet metal fabrication, uh, place. If you were to go and look at, uh, technical metals down on Route 16, very rarely you see an 18 wheeler in their lot. It's usually box truck, stuff like that.
Okay.
You know, that stuff usually doesn't come on an 18 wheeler.
So we've largely addressed the, the topic of kind of the dangerous intersection between Cape Road and Bates Street, but I did want to point out one other fact there. Um, with respect to the soccer fields, we've seen where they've had, you know, tournaments and the like, where they've, you know, overflown the capacity for their, um, you know, their parking lot. And as a result, people start parking on the streets. Um, and that, that's a fairly regular occurrence during the summer. So that's something that we should also take into consideration when planning for, you know, entrances and exits from this site and, and additional danger along that area.
I think we're, uh, we're also taking a look at, uh, that, that site also, the soccer fields and, um, trying to, uh, get them from, from parking on the street. Um, you know, it's, uh, I mean, that's a state road and it's actually illegal to park on, on the side of the state road, but, um, so our controls as far as signage and stuff are limited because we can't do it. Um, but, uh, I think, um, Mr. Mazhar and the other people, uh, pretty much anything I've asked them to do in the past. I did notice late, uh, early last year before, uh, the COVID stuff really broke out that, that there was a lot of, uh, parking on the street and stuff, or the fall before especially. And, um, so we are going to try and address that. I don't know whether he's going to add additional parking or, or what the case may be if he can, but, um, yeah, there's, I mean, that's a concern of mine also.
Okay, great. Um, uh, my, my bullet under parking, I, I feel like the applicant sufficiently answered this with respect to having offices on the southerly side of the building. Um, we've talked somewhat on the, uh, you know, the look of the building and we talked specifically about the road facing side, but I think that, you know, a nice consideration for those who have, um, uh, you know, residences on the southern side of the building would appreciate kind of that colonial look and finish that we've been talking about. Um, and then lastly in terms of exterior features, uh, just with respect to the, the lighting plan, um, I'm curious about what the timing is for, for the, the lighting on the exterior building.
Do you have a lighting plan or is that?
We have a lighting plan. We hadn't talked about, um, the question of the timing of when the lights shut off.
Oh, okay. I, I see what you're.
And again, I would think they'd be on a timer where they're probably shut off at nine or 10 o'clock or at least.
Yeah.
A lot of the intensity goes down and there's maybe just some low level security lighting left up.
Okay.
If I can, if I can inject a couple of things here, this is John Bozier from Aris Construction, the applicant. Uh, I raised my hand earlier, but I didn't get acknowledged. Um, and I'd like to just follow in with the, some answers. And I've been waiting, I waited patiently, but I didn't get asked to speak. So if you could, I'd like to jump back and answer some of your questions.
Sure.
And do that anytime.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I'd like to address the facade. The facade is not just a metal building. Uh, it's a fairly well dressed building. We do, uh, the bottom area of the building is done with a brick. Uh, it's fairly dressed up, both, uh, the area that's going to face the residence and the area that faces the street. We also have that abreviate buffer that runs that entire area and those abrevieties will grow quite quickly to a height of 12 to 14 feet. So I don't think that's a concern. As far as the, uh, entrance and exit, uh, down by Bates Road, uh, I'm good with eliminating that. Uh, we can eliminate that. Brian, if you want to take a look at that, we can eliminate that. Uh, as far as the building and doors being open and noise, the first 10,000 square feet is, uh, done with a complete HVAC system. So I don't think they're going to be leaving the doors open because they're going to be paying to, uh, provide AC in that area. And we do a heavily insulated building. So noise is not going to be a problem. Uh, the buffer area I'm a little concerned with because as I read the bylaw and possibly I'm wrong, I think I'm abutting a highway business strip. So I don't directly abut the rural residence. So I'm concerned about that because maybe I misread that. Uh, but that section, we're actually along that entire edge of the building. We abut a highway business strip, not rural residential. So we'd have to look into that.
Jeff, can you, hold on one second, please. Can you weigh in on that? Is there a buffer between, is there a strip between?
There is a strip between us.
There is a strip of land. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There is a strip between, um, and it's that part of the solar farm that wraps around the southerly end of the premises of 35 Cape Road. There's that finger that goes out basically between us.
Can you show me on there?
Actually, I can.
Yeah, there's quite a big, quite a big area there.
Basically, our locus is shown in the dark black line. The solar farm comes out around this way. And basically, these are the residential lots, but the solar farm has land south of us as well, which runs in this area here. Again, there's a rural residential highway business. And again, there's one lot, we are one lot.
How, how wide is that, uh, that strip of property that falls in, uh, highway business?
I'm going to say it's approximately 60 feet.
You got 60 feet, then from the highway business, you got 60 more feet to the building?
That's correct.
So right there is 120. Uh, Eric, how far is your property from the highway business strip of land?
So my story wall abuts the, the solar strip. Um, when, when they did the, uh, the land purchase in order to make the, uh, the, the solar field, you know, a legal lot, I had asked that question as to whether that would impact this 100 foot, 200 foot buffer. And I was told, no, that it would not impact those buffers as those will rely on the district lines, not on the lot lines.
Well, I mean, that would never be true. I mean, then I gotta, you know, you'd have to worry about every business that came within reach. And why would, if there was, if there was one business that, uh, was adjacent, um, or one commercial property that was adjacent, maybe it's, you know, a hundred wide. Why would I require then that buffer on the second? Cause it's already going to be a buffer on the first property. Why would I require the second, a buffer on the second property? I mean, I'm not even sure. To be honest with you, Eric, I'm not even sure we could legally do that, but, um, that's something I could, you know, let me take a look at this, uh, real quick.
Yeah, we, we, this is John Bozier again from Aris Construction. Be fairly concerned about that because we initiated, uh, this entire plan based on the preface that we already had a buffer and we weren't a direct abutter. Uh, you know, we're, we're into this for a considerable amount of money at this point.
Yeah, I understand that. You know, I would have been like to have broached that question prior to smittle, but, um, nobody really reached out to, to inquire about that. If you were concerned, I would have thought you would have.
We, we're not concerned. I'm, I, you know, I've, perhaps I need to be concerned now, but my interpretation was that we were not a direct abutter.
I mean, by rights, you're not.
I mean, we'll do, you know, we're going to do everything we have to do to give you some privacy there. Now, obviously our intent is not to come in and be bullies about this, but, you know, we did spend quite a bit of time reviewing what our rights were. We're trying to come in with a building that meets all of the needs here.
You have, uh.
Tenants, so.
Uh, not on our plans. We can add it from GIS.
Eric, do you have a, do you, do you have a, something that shows the location of your home as apparent to, um, the building?
Um, let me check where you heal here real quick to see.
Had a slide up with the radius? It showed the radius?
I don't have it in front of me. Um, I think the, uh.
My concern is, my concern is I'm not looking to, um, on the site plan review, I, we generally don't look, you know, it's not like we look to deny an application. We make sure the applicant builds it to how we want. Um, it's, um, it's, it's a little different stage than if you're under special permit. So if there's things we can do to kind of eliminate your concerns, you know, the board's open to hear those.
Well, if I'm being candid, Mr. Chairman.
It isn't like under special permit, the town can make the building disappear because it's not, you know, special permit usually addresses that and this is as of right use for that district.
With respect, Mr. Chairman, uh, part of what I enjoy is, is the, this buffer area in between me and, and, uh, you know, the, the highway district. Uh, you know, as we voted in that, that highway district and, and approved these bylaws, uh, understanding that that, those buffers would be maintained such that, uh, you know, highway district businesses wouldn't be disproportionately impacting those of us who, you know, border the, the new district, uh, was pretty important. Um, it, it's, I understand the applicant's concern, um, but, you know, fact of the matter is, is that it's in, in the bylaws as it is right now.
I, I guess that's an interpretation.
And I, I, I tend to agree, Eric. It is, it is an interpretation. So we're just trying to look for an avenue that, that, you know, cure is all. I mean, I could take it to counsel, but I know, I know what her answer is going to be. I mean, I've been doing this for 12 years and, um, um, her answer is going to be is the way the bylaw is written right now, con- currently. Um, now maybe in the future we can do, do something about those, but at, at this point in time, um, it, uh, so what I want to do is I'd like to bring some type of resolve to this. I mean, you know, we're talking, we got 60 feet of buffer in the, in the, um, solar area, correct?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. Um, and we get 60 feet to the building. You're going to put abrevieties up. Is that going to create enough buffer? Um, you know, density of abrevieties is pretty, you know.
I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to, to make a, a snap decision on a, a major thing like this in the moment. Um, I recommend that we, you know, continue it. Um, and I noticed that some other residents have questions as well.
Well, why, why don't we move on to the other, the other residents? We're going to end, end up continuing this meeting tonight anyways because he's got to give me some answers on the traffic and, uh, before we move forward. Um, and I'd like to see a rendering of what we got for the property and certainly any other applicants.
He eliminated, he, he, remember Bill, he, he's going to eliminate that entrance off of Bates Street too. So, I mean, that's going to, uh, help alleviate a lot of stress on that intersection.
Yeah, it's probably going to create more of a buffer for you, Eric, too.
Talking to the owner of the solar farm and maybe there's some supplemental.
All right, let me move on to some of the other, uh, the other people who, do you have anybody else? I see a hand up there, uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I wasn't sure if, if, uh, Mr. Bozier was done or not. He may have, we, we got, we got under discussion and numerous people chimed in about this specific issue. I'm not sure if he's done. I'd like to hear him out before we go on.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine. I just, I, this is John Bozier again. I just want you to understand our, our concern is to fit into the community and we've, we've taken some great steps to make sure this is a low height building, number one. We dress the buildings up quite nice. It's an air conditioned building, 10,000 square foot building that's going to be air conditioned on the first tenant. Uh, we've lamented with our engineers over buffers and. Uh, we've lamented with our engineers over buffers and making sure that we fit in here. Our main concern is to bring, you know, business into the community. We, we could have been in a number of other places. We chose this location specifically because it works perfect for what we do, and you're more than welcome to go look at some of the other facilities that we own. Uh, we're very low-impact to an area, and we're always very concerned to fit in and be good neighbors. Um, that's why we're sitting here, we can make that decision immediately. Get rid of the southern side entrance, which is not easy on us, believe me, that hurts us for future tenancy. Uh, we're doing everything we can to provide you with a buffer. Uh, fact of the matter is, it, it is a highway business area, and somebody's gonna be in there. And I actually would like to say, we're probably the best guys to go in there. Um, you know, we do care quite a bit about what we do, so I'd, I'd like you to take a good look at this plan. You know, we need to move forward. Uh, we, we'll get back to you immediately with all of your questions, we'll answer them right away, and we already have renderings, we can have those to you tomorrow. But right now, we're kind of up against it with COVID and everything else. We have some requirements to some people that wanna be in these buildings. Uh, we have a company that's coming out of Holliston, uh, as far as, you know, speaking to the concerns of what takes place in the production. These production facilities now have recaptured facilities within them, their equipment doesn't spill out, they have their own containment chambers. Uh, everybody is very concerned about the environment, and they all work to meet those needs. So, we're doing everything we can to bring you what we can, but, you know, we would like to address, uh, especially address something that's a concern of the neighbors, and resolve it as quickly as we can. Um, as I said, I'm, I'm not trying to, to push my way through here, but we've done a lot of research, we did have our council review everything, and we thought we were within our right here. So, with that being said, I'll, I'll leave that to the planning, and we, we certainly are, will welcome any comments from any of the neighbors and do what we can to alleviate any concerns. That's, that's it for me.
I see another hand up there that, uh.
Yeah, I have my hand up, I mean, there's Douglas Hartman from 7th Bates Street.
Yes.
I would just like to point out that the section 3.01 is fairly clear, and that it says, excuse me, whenever a non-residential district, a residential district, a 100-foot buffer from the lot lines, and a 200-foot buffer from any residential building. It doesn't say anything about there being a separate strip of land it's based on. So, I would agree with, uh, Eric, that this is a violation of that buffer.
I mean, I guess I had a question, this isn't under a, uh, exception.
What's that?
I had a question, is this under a special permit?
No, this is as of right.
As of right? Okay, that's all that I had.
Hello?
Hold on, please.
Sure.
Hi, go ahead.
Uh, Sandra McSweeney on, uh, 6th Bates Street. Uh, some of my concerns have, have been answered. Uh, certainly had concern about the traffic, since we had two fatalities a couple of summers ago, and, uh, that was horrific. And, um, since then, a stop sign did go up, which was to the credit of the highway department. One of my other concerns, though, because I too am concerned about, as the applicant is, about environmental impact, and, um, as you may or may not know, the town of Hudson, Massachusetts, had a great deal of problems with their water due to PFAS, polyfluoroacrid substances, contaminants that find their way into the water system. And one of the, um, major contributors to PFAS are metal fabrication companies.
Uh, yes, um, I'm, I'm fully aware, I actually sat in on the hearing on that issue, and those stemmed from businesses that were in existence, uh, long before the new environmental regulations came out, uh, specifically to those type of business like metal manufacturing. Um, and, uh, so, with, um, with the guidance, obviously, of EPA, the requirements of EPA, uh, any border health requirements, um, certainly if they have a typical use that requires any type of drainage or floor drainage, they're gonna have to come before us again. Uh, I don't know if Jeff wants to add anything further on that?
I've got nothing to offer on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so it, um, you know, we're looking at a, in different environment than what they dealt with, uh, with their water contamination. That wasn't something that happened under the current restrictive laws of the EPA, especially in Massachusetts, because we have stormwater, uh, our, our stormwater management systems and stuff are very, very critical in Massachusetts. Um, so, it's like runoff is extremely difficult to, for, but, um, once again, there's governmental agencies and border health that govern, that oversee that. Um, it, uh, we allow this light manufacturing in, in Mendon, I mean, it's, uh, a use that's been around for a while. Um, so, it, um, but it, it predates even the rewriting of the bylaws. Um, we have several, uh, we have several metal manufacturing places in Mendon, um, machine, we have machine shops existing just down the street from you, a very large one that is now a car, uh, facility. Um, that one existed for almost 40 years, I think. And, you know, so, I think you're in a much safer environment today than obviously you were back when those type of places were running. Certainly, if there was any type of real caustic hazardous material that tried to go in there, you'd obviously have to take good hazard precaution. Um, light manufacturing generally is one of those. I guess that that's been a liable use in, in town for quite, quite a many years. I didn't hear that. What did you, what'd you say?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Doug Hartman from 7th Bates, I just had a question on the permit again, um, section 3.01E, uh, says light manufacturing related to light manufacturing in 59, in any building in excess of 10,000 square, it indicates in a high-grade, it's a special permit, is that, am I reading that wrong?
Is that 3.01E?
3.01, 3.01E, and on in table A, table of uses, 57 and 59. 57 is just the general industrial, and then 59 further restricts that any industrial use.
You're over on the table of uses, okay.
Whoever's on the cell phone, I'm gonna mute you, because there's a lot of background noise. If you dial star six, you can unmute yourself.
I guess it would depend upon the use. Um, generally, that's applied, uh, the use, probably applied by the, uh, by zoning, uh, the zoning, uh, the building department. Um, so, I guess it would depend upon the use, uh, that's going to go in there. Is it, you, you got it described as light manufacturing. Um, if it's industrial, he's correct, it would need to go through site plan review.
Well, and as a matter of fact, in the table of paragraphs above for, uh, sorry, let me look, a, a business in retail even, you look at line 56, this is a business in retail even, above the right, above by the right, square feet of building here, it's also by.
Where, where are you? You're jumping all over the place, honey.
So, if you, I'm just going up to the next category up in the table, which is, it's retail, that starts on page 25. Uh, if you go down to line 56, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, lines above what we're talking about now, it also has the 10,000 square foot that goes into special permit for, for highway business, so. At least it appears that to me here.
They're conflicting bylaws. As of right, the other one requires special permit.
As of right, under 10,000 square feet, of 10,000, it would be special permit, it seems to me.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Under 57, use 57, it doesn't, it doesn't describe a, a square footage, yeah.
Again, Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering, I'm not sure how to interpret this, because I, I don't know if a use, you know, a use is a business, not the building, but a business within the building?
Right. Well, and that's it, that's gonna be a such, a separate, uh, but the question is, is it's like this building gonna be utilized for light manufacturing, is it gonna be utilized for industrial? If you're telling me it's gonna be utilized for industrial right now, then it's gonna go through special permit. I would suggest, so you don't run into a situation down the road where, I mean, we can certainly special permit the use, but do you want to deal with, uh, a special permit on an, on a tenant, or do you wanna deal with it on a building level? So.
I think if we're going to continue, I think that that's one of the things that we'll talk to the applicant about, and we'll talk about that, um.
Sure. Because if, if that's the case, we're gonna have to reapply.
Yep, I understand that.
We're gonna have to re-advertise.
I see the merits, and I see the pluses and minuses, you know, to.
Yeah, you understand what I'm saying.
I do, is it, it allows you greater flex, it allows the applicant greater flexibility.
Greater flexibility if he does the, the special permit now, or if he does it by the use.
Yeah, and if we maybe get some documentation, and I think, you know, for our applicant, their biggest concern is, you know, getting this building underway so they can secure the larger tenant and the smaller tenant, and to get that ball rolling as quickly as possible. So, we'll, we'll talk about that, and, and, um, if we do need to fill out a special permit application, we'll do that as quick as possible, and.
Yeah, because if it comes in under light manufacturing, then it doesn't require a special permit until a use goes in that does.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you bring in industrial, then the use permit has to be applied for, you know, under tenancy, which could create a problem for your tenant.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that, you know, we'll get some documentation, um, to you guys, y- you know, to talk more about the light manufacturing aspect of.
Okay.
Of what we're doing.
I'll leave that to you. Are there any other questions by the, I see a hand up. Ann, you got a hand up?
No, I think you didn't have any more.
Are there any other questions? Hello?
I had left my hand up, my apologies.
Oh, that's quite all right. All right, so I think we have enough questions to answer, um, prior to the continuation of next meeting. If at some point, um, we're, we're gonna meet anyways, and we'd have to discontinue the hearing, but if at some point you guys decide that you're gonna go for industrial use on the building, let Gail know, uh, you'll have to file another application for special permit site plan, and then, um, and then we can just discontinue the current site plan review, and then we can move on to the, uh, special permit site plan review. All right?
Motion, continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Go make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road to March 8th.
It's March 8th, early enough.
7:05?
March 8th, at 7:0.
Uh, do you have enough time to advertise if he gets back to you in the next? Well, we'll continue this, if in, in fact, you go the other route.
We'll let you know as soon as.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's the best way to go.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Lambresino, aye.
John Vanshels, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
All right, so we have five ayes. Continue to March 8th at 7:05.
7:05.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a, a question? Will, will we have, um, a definitive answer on that, that buffer zone question at that continuous?
Yes, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna meet with town council and give, figure, uh, figure out what her interpretation is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got Randy Waterman, and we've got somebody else here, right? Mark Benoit?
Who do we have? Yeah, here, Mark Benoit?
I think Mark is here. Are you Mark?
Where's Mark?
Yeah.
Go on, I, I think you wasted a whole lot of time for nothing, because I think we already went over this with, Andy, you're the, you're the one, the one down?
I don't know if he knew what I was asking for. You know, I have three, three lots.
Well, I certainly didn't know what he was asking for, so.
I have three lots.
Yeah.
60, 54, and 58.
Okay.
What I wanna do is, I wanna take 10 feet and put it on 60, and then take the rest of 50.
You have a copy of the plan, just so I can look at it real quick. Anywhere, I could just, I can stick around. All right, this is Oxford Road. Let's just cut out in the middle of this thing. Oh, all right.
So, that's the asphalt for 60.
Hey, what do we got for French?
63 here, on 60. It's 62 here on 60.
Okay, this is the problem that we have. This is what I thought we were going to run into. Anytime you're making, you got three lots here and you're taking 10 feet from one, moving it to the other?
Well, what I want to do is, okay, this is 50 from over here.
Yeah.
So it's going to be like this, you know. He's going to take 10 feet, 10 feet over here, right? And then take 54 and just make it 58, because I take three, three seven tuck, right? So I was going to just combine because I talked to the excesses office. She's, she was saying, you know, you could take a whole 50 and just leave this one. I said, no, I don't want to. I was just going to take 10 on there and put on the extra one for the garage right here. My door's facing my house here.
Don't you get away with that? These are all in the same name?
Yeah.
Contiguous? She won't you get away with it? Is there a building? Is there still a house here?
Yeah, it's still here, yeah.
Oh, so they can combine them?
Yeah.
Um, so basically, what we're doing is we're taking this one component lot, so taking one away from it and adding to another one component lot. We can't do an 81p, which is, which is, uh, approved by, because either one of these lots conform to Town Management Regulation, so it's one of our requirements that, and, uh, so you'd have to go to the ZDA first. They were wish to take the 10 feet away from this and move it to there and then come back to us for the ANA because what the ANA does, I mean, according with the registry deeds, yeah. Don't you go to the ZDA and get that, that done, then you come back to us with some ANA based on your, uh, approval. I just changed it all down.
Yes, that's all as well. I just, I, I can do that though. That's, now I might have to go.
Well, if I'm ZDA says okay.
I'm going to ZDA.
Yes. Because, you know, like I said, I, I want to take this ledge out now and here, but, you know, I don't want to go and take it out if I'm, you can't do that.
Yeah. Personally, I don't see why you can't do it because you own all the land.
Sure.
You know, if you're buying a piece of land from somebody else.
Yeah, we're just changing property.
Where you own all the land.
Now, I don't think there's.
You're already changing the boundary line.
You're just moving a boundary line of property already.
On your own property.
Yeah. Now legally, you can't do it for obvious reasons because it could get appealed. Someone could appeal it. I think you could appeal it and, and take it, deny it based on the appeal because basically, uh, without the ZDA's approval, you, what you're doing is illegal. So, it, um.
Yeah, I'm going to go through.
Yeah, I think you can do that.
The engineering company's just backed up and they can't get them to do it. I just want to.
You must be talking about, uh, they're all busy right now.
Everybody's busy.
I've been having some working over my plans for a year, so.
So that's why I just.
Now, I've got to, forget it. But anyways.
So that's what I was just, I was just making sure that there was, that I'd be able to do it before I took all this ledge out and find out that I would need to take.
I think you can do this. For, you own this. If somebody else owned this, we wouldn't sell 10 feet, make that, less non-conforming.
Yeah, that'd be a problem actually, taking someone else part. That's really good. That's what they said. Accessus office, because it don't really matter, because all you're going to do is take, if you take 10 feet from there and put it on there and then take this and put it on to 58, then that just, 54 is going to go away. That's what she couldn't figure out. I'll tell them it went 60, 54, 58.
Because that's what we're defending. He may surely screw that right up. They will after they go to the ZDA.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
He's going to get it, he's going to get it.
I think they go to the ZDA and grant the.
Once Bill gets his stuff together, then we can go and do all that. I just wanted information.
I think that's better.
All right, good. Anything else on Bill?
Thank you.
Randy Waterman for 47 Milford Street.
Is anyone here for 47 Milford Street?
It supposedly was, uh, it was going to be a, uh, virtual.
Well, this is the, yes, the 22nd.
47 Milford Street, you up there?
I don't think so.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is it. If you want to set a public hearing date.
All right.
That's the point. I don't know if you want to see him.
Not really.
Go to the public hearing.
No, we'll, we'll let it. Does Jeff have a copy?
Do I need a copy?
Uh, not yet. We waited until.
What are you talking about?
Set a public hearing date.
Yeah, soon, whatever.
So much.
I need a, uh, motion for, to set a public hearing date for 47 Milford Street for a.
Marijuana dispensary.
Oh, uh, medical marijuana dispensary.
Yeah.
I don't see medical.
It would have to be the 22nd.
Yeah, the Taylor rental.
Take a motion to set a public hearing for 47 Milford Street Medical Marijuana Facility for March 22nd at 7:05.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Lambresino, aye.
John Vansel's aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
All right, Jim.
Second.
Hold on.
And it's nine o'clock.
It's going to be on.
Hey, not my fault.
March 22nd, is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct. Site plan special permit decision for 103 Exbridge Road.
Oh, we can't leave yet. We got to sign this, that girl.
No, I'm going to go buy it and sign it tomorrow.
Yeah, Damon, Damon knows about it. Well, I sent it out.
Yeah, because I don't want, I don't want Fernandez after me.
So do all you do have, it was approved, right?
Yeah.
So all you have to do is sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
My law's already signed?
Yeah, I just gotta, I gotta read it real quick. I'm just going to burn through.
Are we going to sign it tonight or are we going to stop down and sell?
Yeah, you, you didn't sign.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, wait a minute.
Is this supposed to be changed?
Yeah, we did change it down here. See, that's the old one. This is a new one.
Oh, yeah, and the second one you were.
This is the old one. This is a new one.
Yeah. So in other words, you see down here, this is the new one.
What are we talking about?
Um, the vote.
Signed the other night.
They had to make a change or something on it.
I don't know. I didn't just take that other one off.
Okay.
The crossing Redwood, marijuana place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who wrote this, uh?
I think.
Ryan? Chris Ryan?
Was it John? Not?
Oh, John never writes any of this.
But John didn't write it.
Oh, okay.
Bob wrote it, didn't he? Bob Paxton?
Oh, Bob doesn't write them either. He has a girl in him.
Well, he had a girl write them, but I mean, they were.
Yeah, anybody left on up there? Dan?
Just Dan.
Okay.
Just Damon. Just Damon.
Waiting to do my roll call on John.
That's your favorite vote of the day.
Is that right?
All right, do I have a motion?
Barry already made it. Nice seconded.
You can sign.
I made it 10 minutes ago.
All of them in favor?
Roll call.
James Quirk, aye.
John Vansel's aye.
Phil Lambresino, aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Jim, I'm going to put these right on my.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, Damon.